A call this August 21st, 2018, special meeting of the Bernalillo County Commissioners to Order. We'll have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Mr. Martinez, I have a couple of questions before I move on. Do we have to suspend the rules now before we go to public comment? Or...
Mr. Chair, I believe that we would just follow the agenda which has been adopted, published in a...
Okay, so before we would go to...
And so item three is public comment, which does not require...
So you want, so we just go through that and then want to suspend in order to really have the meeting? We would do that before item four A?
On the adoption question, we would have to go through a process on it to make sure we comply with our rules.
On suspension, okay.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. So we will now go to public comment. You will have two minutes to speak. You will be given a 30-second notice to wrap up your comments and a final notice when your time is up. When your name is called, please make your way down to the podium and state your name for the record before you begin your comments.
Tre'Shawn Buffin, Eric Shimomoto, Trish Lopez, Terri Storch.
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Tre'Shawn Buffin. I want to thank you guys for allowing me the opportunity to talk to you guys tonight. However, it saddens me that I have to do so. Last week, a decision was made that grossly undermined the voices and concerns of over 28,000 of your constituents. The decision made not to put the Democracy Dollars on the ballot only serves to delay our progress towards a more democratic and people-based city election. I feel that I speak for every one of those 28,000 constituents, including myself, when I say we are appalled and we are offended. With your 3-2 vote against allowing us to decide whether or not to bring Democracy Dollars to Albuquerque, you have attempted to silence our voices and hinder our progress forward. I respectfully, adamantly, and strongly urge you to listen to the 28,000 of us and place the Democracy Dollars on the November ballot for us to decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, I won't have no outbursts. If we will have outbursts, we will ask people to keep it down. We want to make this meeting move as swiftly and as smoothly as we possibly can.
Thank you. My name's Eric Shimomoto. I'm one of the 28,000 people who signed the Democracy Dollars petition, and I'm here to support that it be placed on the ballot in November. And I'd love to talk about all of the benefits of that plan and why it's a good plan, but I think that's a little bit beside the issue at this point. I was trying to explain to someone what's going on right now with the procedure, and it's kind of hard to explain. And the thing that I came up with that's most relatable that I could explain was it's kind of like if you go online and you buy something that you want, you order a shirt or something, and then while you're waiting for it to get delivered, you get a call from FedEx saying, hey, we've got your shirt. We're looking at it, we don't think it's going to look good on you, we don't think you're going to like this shirt. So, and I'm saying, no, you know, it's a little bold, the colors are bright, but it's the shirt I want. And also, why am I arguing with a delivery service about what clothes I'm going to wear? That's how I feel tonight, and that's how I feel with all of these people showing up to talk about it. The merits of the Democracy Dollars proposal aren't really what's before this council. I respect that the county is responsible for conducting elections, and that involves a lot of work and a heavy responsibility, and you have to make sure there's enough polling places and that every precinct gets the right ballot. You have to look at the candidates and the issues and the questions that are on that ballot, and you see that they're properly submitted and that they belong there. But when you reach beyond that, to decide whether those candidates are the best candidates or whether the questions or issues being placed on the ballot are things that you support, well, you're crossing a line. At that point, you're deciding whether I should get my shirt or not. That's a question for the voters, and the voters should decide in November, and 28,000 of us have decided that the voters should have that opportunity. So I urge you to approve the ballot question and let the voters make that decision in November. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners. My name is Trish Lopez, and I'm the mother of a five-year-old daughter, one of five children to a 79-year-old widow, a sister, an auntie, and a friend to many loved ones in our community. I'm a volunteer for League of Women Voters and New Mexico Women in Film. I'm the founder of Teen Years, a small business and nonprofit here based in Albuquerque that connects tech-savvy teens with senior citizens to learn technology. And I'm speaking today on behalf of so many people who couldn't be here and wanted to be here. When you voted down Democracy Dollars last week, so many of us were shocked. 28,000 of us signed that petition for you to get this on the ballot in November. Commissioner Hart Stebbins, I've always seen you represent the people in your district and those outside of it, even though you know there probably are many, many people who will never vote. So, thank you. Commissioner O'Malley, you are my commissioner in our family's district, and we've never met, but I appreciate the way that I see you vote as well. Commissioner Talbert isn't here, which is unfortunate, but hopefully he will be open to considering new initiatives like this in the future that are clearly nonpartisan. Commissioner Smith, as someone who's supported transparency in the past and received the 2013 Best in Government Award from Common Cause, a nonpartisan group that's all about getting dark money out of politics, I'm unclear why you voted against this. Commissioner Quesada, you had well over 4,000 voters in your South Valley and West Side neighborhoods who petitioned you to get this on the ballot in November. Last week, you voted against them. You voted against 28,000 of us. These are folks who don't want to see campaigns funded through entities like Santalina. We don't want corporate money so that we can do attack ads against our neighbors. We want to have anyone who wants access to run for office able to run for office. We want old-school, quid pro quo, dark money out of politics. Please represent us as you were elected to.
Again, I'm going to re... Again, I'm going to ask one more time. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners. Chairman Quesada, my name is Terri Storch. I first heard of Democracy Dollars from my former state senator. Common Cause was promoting it. My mom was an early member of Common Cause when I was in high school, so I looked into it. I was among the about 70% of Albuquerque voters who approved public campaign financing in 2005, and I happily support this improvement. I decided to volunteer to get signatures on the measure, to get the measure on the ballot, and I want to quickly tell you what I did. Along with my husband, Jack Cargill, a retired Sandia Pension Fund manager, I gathered signatures from voters coming out of polling locations on primary election day in June. I went on gathering signatures at public events over the next few months. Like other volunteers, I observed I had a clipboard with a petition with the language of the proposal at the top of the petition. I had a copy of the full notice of intent in case a person wished to read it before signing. I looked for a group of people since it took me a good three or four minutes to explain key points of the proposal. It also allowed them to hear each other's questions and answers. I always offered the full proposal for them to read. I concluded with a reminder that by signing, they were not voting for the measure, rather they were agreeing Albuquerque voters would get to decide on it in the November election. I also suggested that they continue to follow it because there would be much future debate and information on the measure to inform their vote. There were about a half dozen people who did not sign the petition. I never asked them why. A few offered a reason, mainly they did not believe in public financing. Most read the language at the top of the petition before signing, and one person read the entire notice before signing. Each of my encounters were friendly, barring none. It was a fine, uplifting civic experience for me, engaging the enthusiasm of the folks who signed the petition. It was for them as well. Many of us put great effort into the civic enterprise to gather signatures from our fellow voters. It was a blow to our efforts when some questioned the integrity of that effort and of the measure itself. Albuquerque voters, in my opinion, expect and want to see this on the ballot in November. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maria Morales, Patrick Rogers, Lisa Barrios, Stephen Mills.
Buenos dias. Soy de distrito dos y mi nombre es Maria Morales. Estoy aquí para apoyar los dólares de democracia que es importante que mi voto cuente en las próximas elecciones. Los candidatos sean responsables para la comunidad de los dólares de democracia. Sean una manera de saber si los candidatos van a estar ahí para todos nosotros. Yo soy una ciudadana que firmo para los dólares de democracia. Me gustaría que mi firma algún día ayudara a alguien a correr para el concejal de la ciudad y que me va a representar dignamente a mi comunidad.
Good afternoon. My name is Maria Morales. I am from District Two, and I am here to support Democracy Dollars. It's very important for me that my vote counts in the next coming elections. It's important to me that the candidates are responsible for the community and that Democracy Dollars is a way of knowing if the candidates will be, excuse me, will be there for the community and not only for the money. I am a citizen of Albuquerque and I signed for the Democracy Dollars, and I would like to know that my signature someday will help someone that is running for city council and is going to represent me and my community. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, my name is Pat Rogers, and I did not sign that petition. Now, my name may appear on it because there are 7,000-plus names that have now been determined to be invalid. And I'm here tonight to ask you to take a close look at the document that they want you to endorse and place on the ballot. And my first point is that it is indeed your obligation to look at it on a substantive basis. That's exactly what they ask you to do in the petition. Says it right here. The applicants are requesting the county commission review the language from the ballot initiative. If you review that language, you're going to come to the conclusion that I have that there are some serious procedural problems with this. One, it's logrolling. They have combined three separate ideas into one proposal. This is a common defect of these initiatives by special interest groups when they are drafted in secret without any nonpartisan review such as would occur if you had legislation here and public notices and so on. There are three separate items on there. They're increasing the amounts paid to the mayor candidates, almost doubling it. They're creating this Democracy Dollars procedure. And third, and completely unrelated, they are changing the date of the municipal elections. These are unrelated matters. It's logrolling and it's invalid. And I want you to take a close look at the language because the problem of drafting these in private is highlighted by what they've done. When you look at the language, instead of simply doubling the amount available to the mayor, they've quadrupled it. The language that they've adopted in this would allow for essentially 350% more to go to the mayor. The idea that you...
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Lisa Barrios, Stephen Mills, Rudolph Serano, Mike Alvarez.
My name's Steve Mills. First of all, I can just say, I don't think the petition asks you to endorse this as Mr. Rogers suggests. I think it asks you to review it and put it on the ballot barring any major problems with it. I think your own attorney can review this and tell you if it constitutes logrolling. During the first discussion of this last week, you said there are many questions about it. I think there are always many questions about any of these large frameworks that are put up on the ballot. One example of that is the Ethics Commission legislation that's going to be on the ballot, but it's not going to totally govern what the Ethics Commission is. That will go back to the legislature, and they will put in the detailed nuts and bolts of the Ethics Commission in the coming session. In this case, the city council will take this broad framework and iron out the details. That's not your job, that's their job to do. Your job, as I see it, is to put this on the ballot, let the voters decide the merits of it. There will be full and fulsome debate at that point. I'm sure all the people who are against public finance in any form because they prefer private financing will have their say at that time. I'm from Common Cause. I've been in the newspaper business most of my life. My theory is that the greater participation you have among the people, and our participation is scandalous. 30% in a mayoral election last year. This will increase public participation if it passes, if all the details are ironed out, and that will lead, I believe, to better government, more transparent government. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Quesada, all Commissioners, good evening. First, I want to give a hand to all these people that did tremendous work, you know, getting those signatures done. But the thing is, it's hard work. All you guys have gone door-to-door getting signatures, and I mean, it's tremendous work. And we need to think different ways of getting the people to vote. You know, personally, I'm a revolution network man. We're just getting people with 99 cents and doing our own thing, and we're bringing more people. But these people are doing their work too. We all doing, they all work towards one goal: bring democracy to the table. And that's what we need to do here tonight, you know? Let the people speak, you know? And within the, even if it's only 20,000 signatures, I mean, that's a lot of work, you know? And that's a lot of people supporting us, you know? I don't know what was the issues that was taking it down, you know? I really don't think, you know, but that we have to work more with the city. We did with Topgolf, you know? And we can do it in every aspect, you know? I wish Mr. Talbert was here. I'm planning a run against him, so I'm really sad that he's not here for me to tell him. But I hope you all help me, and some of you too. But this is all about democracy, about everybody to have a vote, everybody to have a say-so. Have a beautiful day.
Thank you.
Mike Alvarez, Arthur Tannenbaum, Ann Romero, Barbara Grothas.
My name is Mike Alvarez, and good evening. I believe that these dollars should be put in the ballot for the future. We have a lot of people that are in UNM taking classes on politics, and they would like to start a new future and especially stay here in Albuquerque. But every time you guys change something or throw it out after we worked so hard to try and put it on the ballot, you're forcing a lot of people to go somewhere else to do their jobs, to go do their life starting all over again. We keep on talking about the future of Albuquerque. Well, where's the future of Albuquerque going to be if you guys continue throwing things out every time we work so hard to put something into the ballot to vote on it? We tried that with Topgolf, and we lost. The city councilors did it on their own. They're doing everything on their own, and they don't care about what we think, and that's the wrong way and the wrong attitude that people have. All my buddies that work in construction are either in Utah, Texas, Colorado, Arizona, they're not working here in New Mexico because there's no jobs here. So what does that tell you? What's the future of Albuquerque going to be like in five more years from now? Think about it. You want a future, then you've got to help us. If you don't want a future, then keep on doing what you decide on doing on your own.
Steve, Mr. Quesada, Arthur Tannenbaum, District Three. Mr. Chairman, I heard an interview on the television. You did an interview, I think, yesterday morning? I can't remember which channel. Actually, it was on my computer, but it was live streaming. But I believe the live streaming is delayed by a minute or two. See, these simple things can get complicated, but it's basically the same thing. I heard the live broadcast of the interview, and it was a really sweet interview. And I guess you're going to do a stand-up comedy thing this coming weekend. Last night at the city council meeting, I tried some comic satire, and it flopped. I rehearsed it more than 50 times because I heard a stand-up comic say, "You really have to work at it." I've worked in the entertainment industry. Anyway, Mr. Quesada, you seem like a totally different person. And so now, I was thinking about it, I cannot think of any political figure that I have more respect for than Debbie O'Malley. She served on the city council, she's very reasonable and respectful, not condescending, not heavy-handed, not feeling like, I never got the perception that she feels she's in an exclusive social club. Anyhow, I read in the Albuquerque Journal that your concern was at the implementation of this. So giving you the benefit of the doubt, Commissioner Quesada, you must not have enough faith in your political establishment that they're going to pull it off. Or if I'm not going to give you the benefit of the doubt, I could only suspect that once you've gotten in the door of a privileged position in the political establishment, you want to shut the door and keep other people out. Anyway, I would hope that if you're going to go ahead and go against Commissioners Hart Stebbins and O'Malley, please cite the specific concerns for the public. I think you owe the public that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ann Romero, Barbara Grothas, Ann Dunlap, Michael Jensen.
Good evening Commissioners and Chairman Quesada. My name is Barbara Grothas, and I am a constituent in your district, Mr. Quesada. I was one of the volunteers who went and got signatures. Other people have spoken eloquently and specifically about the experiences that we had with the hundreds of people that we talked to and got signatures from. It was a community effort. It was everywhere in town, and all of us deserve to see this on the ballot. It's not for you to decide what the voters should decide on. You are here to work for us. We signed the petitions, we worked hard, and it's your job to represent us in that. And I just want to say that I think that it was a terrific effort by a lot of people and that a lot of people felt really insulted and let down by your vote last week. You're supposed to be a Democrat. I don't know who you're working for, but it doesn't seem like you're working for the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, my name is Anna Romero, and I am a constituent in District Four, and I'm disappointed that my Commissioner Lonnie Talbert is not here this evening. But I have extensive background working in policy, and I was very proud and honored to have a direct hand in working on this piece of legislation. I have worked near, over 14 years of my career has worked directly in drafting policy, both here at the state level, at the national level, where I worked on Capitol Hill, working on extensive national policy that was passed, also worked on national policy directly with the White House that was passed, and worked extensively on this also piece of legislation. So this was a wonderful piece of legislation and is a wonderful piece of legislation that couldn't get any more democratic. When we talk about representing our constituents and our communities, what better way than allowing those in our community to directly invest in the candidates of their choosing? To give them an equal opportunity that those big donors have to participate in campaigns and elections. There's nothing more democratic than that. And as many of those who have spoken before me have said, this process isn't about the policy itself, if there are questions or whatnot. Those can be made within, but to say that it was made hidden and in secret is not true. This piece of legislation, we, I even directly worked with others on this bill to directly reach out to every single one of our Commissioners, every single one of our city council members, our mayor's office, to have input even before this legislation was drafted. So what we're asking each of you to do is to just honor your role as elected officials to put this initiative on the ballot in November and give the voters, trust the voters to make the right decisions for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Ann Dunlap. I have a long ago history in politics. I was the mayor in Corales way back, and so I have had a little bit of experience in government, but not as much as you all frankly. But I'm here to ask you to support this resolution. I now live in Albuquerque. I'm in Commissioner O'Malley's district and have lived here since 1998. And I would like to say that I was really proud of New Mexico when we got the paper ballot, which ensured the integrity of our elections. I was really proud when we got public financing and allowed candidates to make their way through the political process without having to beg large corporations or very wealthy individuals for money. What I would like to be proud of after this commission closes this meeting tonight is to be able to say, yes, the Commissioners are going to put this on the ballot because it will be a step forward. I look at other states who are looking at their elective processes and worried about hacking. We don't have to worry about that in New Mexico because we have a paper ballot. Let's continue to make our election process more transparent and more accessible to the people. Thank you.
My name is Michael Jensen. I'm a 27-year resident of Albuquerque in Mr. Smith's district. This is language from an emergency request to a court during one of the earlier incidents when the county wouldn't put something on the ballot. As you can see, it essentially says that the city of Albuquerque is required to get this on a ballot within a very short timeframe and that the county, to the extent that it can, is obligated to make sure it gets on a ballot. You have one in the requisite timeframe. Now, you could say no because it's a county ballot, not a city ballot, but I would remind you that 85% of the people of this county are city residents, so why would you deny them when you can accommodate them? And as has been said quite eloquently already, this is about the citizen's right to petition so that all voters can weigh in. It is not about county commissioners deciding what citizens should or should not be able to do. If this is so fundamentally flawed, that can be raised during the campaign, that's what campaigns are for. And if it's... And if it's really, really bad, courts will strike it down. But those are all things outside of the citizen's right to petition its government, which is what this is about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Dickinson, David Hadwiger, Jane Ronca Washburn, Damian Cruz.
Well, I have not, okay, sorry. Mary Ann Dickinson, and good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. I've worked from everything as a poll worker to a candidate, to a supporter of all sorts of campaigns. And I did actually, late in the game, bring this petition around, not only sign it, but bring it around. And I could've gotten a whole lot more signatures, actually, if I'd started earlier. But I thought it was in good hands. I knew that there were lots of people supporting it and working on it. But I really want to be really emphatic about the fact that this is a citizen initiative and that that's a very important part of our government and the ability of our, the public, the citizens, to engage and to tell our government what we want. To not let this process go through and let people decide for themselves, voters to decide for themselves, is really standing in the way of good government. So I hope that you will pass this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Miss Chairman, members of the Commission, I'm David Hadwiger. I wanna thank you, first of all, for holding this meeting today. I know it's not required, so I'm very grateful. I'm here as a dad. My eighteen-year-old daughter cannot be here today, she's at the United World College Campus in Hong Kong. But when she is here, she and her friends sit in our kitchen and they talk about ethics reform and big money. And she actually cared enough about that to join the State Common Cause Board and get active in it. I thought she was a freak, a teenager who cares about ethics in local government. But I went out, when I was gathering these signatures at the primary election, and I'll be darned if there weren't dozens of kids, just like my own daughter, of young adults, gathering these signatures with her, with me. And I was really struck. That generation gets it, they care. There's a bunch of them out here. Where do you get teenagers showing up at a local government hearing? It's so cool. I'm excited. You met them if you went to the Gus Padraati campaign at all, or if you hang out in the Tim Keller Organization. And I believe they're in both parties, my daughter's friends are in both parties. So, real quick summary, I'm an old guy here trying to urge you to pay attention to these young adults, to listen to their voice, to validate their effort, and to put this on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Damian Cruz. I'm coming to you because I recently ran for office. I ran for state rep and I understand this is a city theme, but it's the same concept. I ran for office and I did not stand a chance. The incumbent outraised me probably twenty to one. I'm now in debt. For my one flyer, she sent out seven flyers. She used a super PAC. She used one, that was a Democratic super PAC, that I did not have access to, which I thought was weird because I ran as a Democrat. She took out a statewide commercial on several radio stations to my one flyer and me going door-to-door. I don't know about you, but I think that's a little ridiculous. And that's why I'm here and that's why I'm for Democracy Dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Casada and Commissioners, my name is Jane Ronca Washburn. I was very proud of the fact that I signed the petition and that I asked other people to sign. I read in the paper that there were objections to the petition. They seemed to me that they were organizational or administration objections that could be addressed by the people who were going to administer these Democracy Dollars. That is not the job of the, of the people who were asking people to develop the, to ask, to ask other people to sign the petitions. That's the job of the city clerk, other people who will be handling Democracy Dollars. So I urge you to go ahead and let the people decide by putting this on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Charlene Piscotti, Kathy Brown, Maureen Skowron, Sandy Stolberg.
Good evening and thank you, Chair Casada and members of the Commission. My name is Charlene Piscotti and, full disclosure, I am running for Burnaleo County Commissioner of District Five. And I, I urge you to vote for putting this on the ballot. I've been listening to the informational comments here tonight and the, the eloquent and heartfelt sentiments toward, toward putting it on, and I thought, what can I add to this discussion? And I just wanna say, I am a mental health therapist in private practice and the one thing that I notice is that the, the body, the heart of the body politic is broken. And when I read that this had not been approved to be on the ballot, after getting twenty-eight thousand petition signatures, it broke my heart, it broke the hearts of so many people. And so I just wanna be brief here and say, I hope that you reconsider and approve this to be put on the ballot so that the citizens can have their vote and their voice in this and so democracy can have a voice. Like you, Commissioner Smith, I also live in the East Mountains, so this, I wasn't able to sign the petition and yet there were so many people out all spring and summer asking me to sign. And because I don't live in Albuquerque, I couldn't sign, but I was all for this. Any kind of civic engagement is wonderful. And, and also as a county candidate, it doesn't apply to my office. The, the financing doesn't.
Thank you.
But I, I have nineteen seconds.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh-huh. Thank you. So, um...
I'll give you another twenty.
I, that's okay, I won't need it. But thank you for hearing me out and just from a heartfelt place, I hope that you do vote to put this on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kathy Brown. I'm a constituent in District Five. I too signed this petition. I did not help collect the signatures, but I know a whole lot of people who did. They worked hard for a very, very long time. When I heard about this vote, I was absolutely stunned. And, um, Casada, you need to start acting like a Democrat. If you're gonna call yourself a Democrat, you need to become a Democrat. Otherwise, I mean, you, you've just ignored twenty-eight thousand signatures. We know you're not a Democrat. And if you continue to ignore this and don't reconsider this, I don't know if you'll be re-elected.
Thank you.
Maureen Skowron, Sandy Stolberg, Jeremy Ferris, J.D. Matthews.
Good afternoon. My name is Maureen Skowron. I am the interim chair for Congressional District One of the Adelante Progressive Caucus. So what that means is I represent a hundred and fifty-one people in Burnaleo County and a hundred and forty-nine of them are in the city of Albuquerque. So this measure got enough signatures, more than enough signatures, to qualify for the ballot. And so that should be the basis of your decision, did it have the signatures to qualify for the ballot? One of the tenets of my group is to increase the voice of individual people in democracy and especially that of underrepresented peoples. Putting this on the ballot will allow the voters to decide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening and thank you so much. My name is Sandy Stolberg. I don't have a whole lot to add, other than it's stunning to me that you would have twenty-eight thousand votes or voices that have said that we want to at least try this. And it seems to me that your duty is to verify those signatures and beyond that, do what's being asked. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, good evening. My name is Jeremy Ferris. I just wanna think with you about the, the veto power that you're purporting to exercise here. I know you've exercised it before, but I just, I just want us to think about it together for a second. I live in, in Lonny Talbert's district, but I don't live in the city of Albuquerque. I don't have a specific interest in whether or not the citizens of Albuquerque amend their, their charter to allow this new campaign finance reform. I don't have an interest that Lonny Talbert, as my Burnaleo County Commissioner, represents. Of course, Mr. Talbert represents many citizens who do have that interest, but, but they are all bound together by a specific polity called the city of Albuquerque. And Albuquerque has a charter, it has a method for amending that charter. And, and so far, pachy, Mr. Rogers' concerns, the, the signatures have been fulfilled to, to move that process along. If there are specific policy concerns about the, the charter amendment, they can be resolved first by the citizens of Albuquerque and if it were to pass, by the city council through implementing ordinances. This, this political body doesn't, doesn't need to weigh in on the specific policy concerns. If the timing of this petition were different, this, this specific board wouldn't have a, a place to weigh in at all. And the, the specific statute that, that, that you're traveling under here, which I take it to be one dash ten dash eight zero two, which is about the order that candidates and offices appear on the ballot, directly after that, it allows the Secretary of State to prescribe questions on the ballot. So she might have the authority to, to put this on the ballot. And it makes me concerned about whether or not this, this commission has the power to do so.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name's J.D. Matthews. I'm a constituent of Commissioner O'Malley's and I appreciate your service. A lot of good points have been made tonight by other speakers. I'm here to ask you to put the Democracy Dollars ballot initiative that was certified by the city on the November ballot. I think the discussion around politics always seems to center around apathy. Voters don't care, young people don't care, people in certain parts of our city don't care. But what I saw from collecting signatures myself and talking to the hundreds of volunteers who also collected signatures is that's just not the case. There are people from all around this city who were actually excited that this was gonna be on the ballot and they were excited to get a chance to vote on it in November. Everyone who signed the, didn't support Democracy Dollars. There were a lot of folks who were like, well, I'm not sure about this, but I want it on the ballot, I want people to discuss this in an election and get a chance to vote on it. I wanted to ask the audience, if you could raise your hand, if you are here to support Democracy Dollars, can you please raise your hand? So just a representation. A lot of people in the audience may be here for the first time as well. This is an issue that's really energizing the community. I know my daughter, Karis, you probably can't see her, but she's here at her county commission meeting for the first time too. And I really, I really, I really want the, I really want the folks who are here for the first time, including my daughter, to really be able to have faith in their elected officials and their government, that when people put in so much work to get this on the ballot in November, that, that we respect that. Because I know a lot of the people in this room respect your job and the work you do because it's not easy being an elected official. But I just ask you, please, respect the hundreds and hundreds and thousands of hours that people put into this to put it on the ballot in November. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Laragnaga, Clifton Chadwick, Ray Gardunio.
Good evening, Commissioners. Commissioner Casada, I have a, oh, Chris Laragnaga. I'm a, I'm a proud precinct captain, precinct chair for the Democratic Party, Ward Twenty-Eight B, precinct five thirty-six. And Commissioner Casada, sin vergüenza! You know, I've got a, I've got an adopted four-year-old boy and, you know, you know, I, I stood by my, you know, my, my son, you know, and as he was, as he was, you know, in the crib and I, I cared for him and I watched Breaking Bad. And I respect you for your work on Breaking Bad. You know, but I'm kinda new to, to some of this and, you know, like my, my grandfather used to say, you know, que barbaridad, you know, you're, you're, you know, I know you went to, to West Mesa and, you know, I, and I get it, you know, we, we've got special interests that are, you know, saying, well, we, we can't have the power, you know, with the people, but in places like Seattle, it's happening and there's progress that's happening here. And, you know, if you truly represent us, we will get out there like, like I have and, you know, we'll work for you. And we will, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll get you in office. Anyways, I got out there and I, I've got, I work as a, as a case manager for the Developmental Disabilities Waiver. I'm an advocate for people and I work full-time. Like I said, I got a four-year-old. I don't have a whole lot of time to garner signatures, but when this was presented to me, and I'm, I'm here, and I wanna thank Laura Lucero, but I'm here representing SWAP, Southwest Organizing Project. I'm gonna be starting up with them here soon. And I'm, and I'm proud to do this. When I was first learning about this initiative, I, I realized that basically what it, what it does is it gives, you know, people that don't have a whole lot of money, an opportunity to have say in, in, in our elections. But anyways, though, you know, come on, come on, Commissioner Casada, let's, let's get it back on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Clifton Chadwick. I've had the opportunity to meet most of the Commissioners, with the exception of you. Known Mr. Casada for a long time and have had the opportunity to visit with both Ms. O'Malley and Ms. Stevins and, and also with Commissioner Talbert. And I think we've had a lot of wonderful expressions about how this is an opportunity to further engage citizens in our process. And so I do wanna point out that the division, as people look at who is getting represented, by who, what for, et cetera, the vote seems to have come down, being voted on in favor of the Commissioners that certainly I readily acknowledge are serving the people of our community and against by the Commissioners that I have questions about. And I don't wanna assume that, that may be anything more than philosophical differences. I do wanna throw down a challenge, though. If you don't vote or don't allow this on the ballot, it appears as though you don't have confidence in your ability to get elected through the support of the public. And so I do wanna suggest that you should turn your votes around and allow this to be on the ballot and then let that serve as your message in your confidence, that you are indeed serving the public, so that when election time comes, you too can play on an even playing field, rather than relying on the, the lawyer that left. Thanks.
Good evening. Sure is nice to see you. My name's Ray Gardunio. I was the first person to qualify and run under public financing. And I won. That could be true for a lot of folks. A lot of folks who wouldn't be able to go to corporations and take money that really is what I would call dark money, and I think everyone would agree, is money that, once you get, you're tainted. So let me just say, you need to put this on the ballot, not just because you have the right to, but because it's the right thing to do. Let me tell you that if we allow... Let me tell you that if we allow this to go forward, it'll be a pushback against those efforts to really undermine public financing as it stands right now. Mr. Rogers is absolutely wrong. It is not something that can't be fixed. It is not something that is not well put together. It is the oligarchs or those who serve oligarchs who want to keep us from running. As I said, Mr. Rogers is wrong. Not the first time he's been wrong. So let's put it on the ballot, and if you don't like it, you can vote against it. But if you like it, then we'll be having a new way of electing folks. Democracy Dollars is just a new way to push back on what is known as Citizens United, a way to disenfranchise all of us, and only the few will be able to have a say. Thank you for reconsidering. I want to thank Commissioners Hart, Devens, and O'Malley. Mr. Casada, we've had conversations in the past. I'm not sure why you didn't vote, but I'd throw this challenge out to you. In a little while, if you go forward, you ought to have the county commission also have this program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
All right. Thank you so much. So what we'll do now is, oh, is she going to get some coffee? Because she needs to make a motion. We have to suspend the rules in order for us to even consider this.
Mr. Chair, maybe just a technical question. So in terms of suspending the rules, that would just be a simple majority. However, if it makes it to the question in terms of reconsideration, it does require that the person that makes that motion was in the affirmative of the last vote, correct? Is that correct?
From my understanding.
Yes. I just want to make sure that's true.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so there would be a motion to suspend the rules?
Yeah, somebody has to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, a move to suspend the rules. Second.
The motion has to come from the prevailing side?
Yes.
Oh, but you suspend the rules?
No.
Mr. Chairman, not on the motion to suspend the rules. Any member can make a motion to suspend the rules. The motion to reconsider would have to be done by the person who voted in the prevailing side. So the suspended rules can be made by any member.
So you have a motion? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? It's three to one. So we will need another motion to reconsider the vote that happened last Thursday?
That's correct. Now, what we've done is suspended the rules, and the specific rule that would have been an impediment would have been the motion reconsider, which usually requires that the motion be done on the same date that the previous action was pending. Since that rule has been suspended, now there could be a motion to reconsider. That motion should be made by a person who voted in the prevailing side.
So I'll make a motion to reconsider.
And it will require a second.
Second.
And I have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? It's three to one. Motion passes. We will now go on to, we will now go on to item 4A, Democracy Dollars, general election ballot question. So, Madam Clerk, can you please issue us a resolution number?
Mr. Chairman, that's AR 2018-60.
Sixty? Thank you. So we have that on the table. Now, do we have someone here to speak, someone here to answer some questions? Because in my opinion, despite what people may believe my position is, my position is, before I put anything ever to the voters, that it is vetted through my office, and it is vetted for the public as a public servant. And starting out with sinveruenza wasn't a good mark for you, by the way, just so you So we have a motion to approve the administrative resolution. We have, please say your names, so we know who's up there, and we will begin to have a discussion on this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. Madam Clerk, my name is DeeDee Feldman, and I am one of the 5,000 people in District One that signed this petition and a former state senator.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Eric Griego with New Mexico Working Families. I'm a constituent of Commissioner Casada, and I appreciate you giving us this opportunity to address the commission on Democracy Dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Sarah Berger. I'm one of the attorneys representing this campaign, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight.
Good evening, Commissioners. Oriana Sandoval, I'm with the Center for Civic Policy. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to answer any questions or concerns you may have about this ordinance.
Okay, so do we have any questions? I'll go to my fellow Commissioners first. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I do have a couple of questions. And I don't want to get into the details of, we did this a week ago, as far as the merits of what we thought, whether this truly gets dark money out of politics. I believe it doesn't, but we'll just find out, you know, in the future if that's the case. You know, but I want to bring to your attention the petition page, which, the only reason I want to bring that to your attention is because it says that it will change the city election date so that they will comply with the state's local election act. I just want to make that clear. That was actually a bill that I passed in the legislature, so I do have a fair amount of knowledge about what's going on with this particular issue. So I don't want to make it seem like I'm just, you know, opposing something that I don't know something about. Actually, I wrote that bill. It was 302 pages. So, and I also want to make the point that my entire service in the legislature, as our county attorney can tell you, I was on the Voters and Elections Committee for all eight years, except for the two years where I actually chaired the committee, and our attorney was on that committee as well. So it's not that I come to any of this with a lack of understanding of what elections are all about. So I just wanted to preface that, preface my questions. And Oriana, many, many hearings with you as well. Good to see you. I do believe that this is an instance of log-rolling. I believe it's going to be challenged in court, and I believe that the county will be under a liability issue if we do pass this, because it does, in fact, impact three different questions. And I spoke last week, if you remember, we had this discussion, the county attorney talked about it a little bit, about whether it was log-rolling and whether we could actually split the question. Because I was willing to do that. I would have been much more happy to split the three questions that are actually on this ordinance, and then we could have voted on each one individually. But we can't do that, because they came to us as one particular petition, and so we can't split it. And so I'm going to say that I'm nervous about voting on something that I know is going to be challenged in court. I know it's going to challenge, it's going to cost the county money to put this on the ballot. So it is up to the county to decide what goes on the county ballot. I mean, that's obvious, and that's why I'm nervous about putting something on a ballot that's going to be challenged. Because I had some very specific questions, I don't remember their names, but they were saying, they wanted to know why I voted against it last time, and I'm going to tell you why I'm going to vote against it again. My other biggest issue is, and I've been involved with ballots for a long time, and spoke with the county clerk and other people as well, this particular ballot that we have coming up, there's a lot of issues that are already on the ballot. I'll just give you a preview of some of the things that are coming up on the ballot, which includes library materials, BCSO, public building upgrades, fire station remodels, Route 66 Center on the west side, emergency radio systems. These are all what's going on the ballot for the GIO bond election. And I believe it's incumbent upon me to protect that for my citizens as much or more than it is to do this. And what I'm saying there is if we put this on the ballot, I've been affirmed that we're going to get the ballot size down to a six-point font. And I don't know if those of you in the audience know what a, can imagine what a six-point font is, but I was even told by one of the executive directors of one of your organizations that she wouldn't want the county ballot to be that small of a font. And so I don't believe it's in the best interest of my voters, who want to go out and improve libraries, improve roads, and make a lot of public improvements, just to allow this to happen when the city could do the same thing. So that's, my concern is about this. I won't go into any greater detail, but some people had asked me the two, why I would vote against this, and those are the two reasons. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, so I do have plenty of comments. One is that some of the emails I read were sent to me, saying that they had met with all the Commissioners. And I'm going to publicly say this, nobody met with me. Nobody called me. Not one elected official, not one elected Democrat official called my office and said, "Hey, this is what's coming forward. This is what we want to do. Would you look at it? Would you support it?" Not a single one. I read it two days before the commission meeting, and it came to me, and I looked through it, and I didn't really know who to call to ask questions. So then, you know, I'm pretty much meeting to meeting Monday and Tuesday before a commission. At that point, my fellow Senator here did try to reach out to call me, to talk to me about it, but I was booked at that point. And then when you came in, you said, "We've been working on this seven, eight, nine months, a year." I'm not quite sure how long. But I've been a Commissioner the whole time, for the time span that you told me that you were working on this. And yet, nobody thought to call the Chair of the county commission, that you, that I was going to have to vote on something that we were going to put forward on a ballot. I don't know, seemed a little kind of shady to me, that something was trying to get fast-tracked. And so I decided I was going to ask some questions that evening. And I'm going to be honest with you. Those questions weren't really kind of answered, they were kind of danced around. And so through that process, and just so you know, I thought, well, you know, they said, "Well, we could still do another meeting, we could bring it back." And I said, "Well, great, because then maybe I have an opportunity to ask those questions again." Or maybe, within the week span from this Tuesday to last Tuesday, somebody would make a meeting with me and go over it, and kind of go by the numbers, and kind of show me why this was a really great thing. And it's Tuesday, and nobody still has reached out to me to have a meeting with me. I don't know about you, but does that seem like it's something that's very important to somebody? Because it didn't seem that way to me. Whether you believe I have, I should know about it, or should care about it, or it should be on the ballot, and it doesn't matter whether I put it out forward or not, that's your opinion, I tend to disagree with you. That, like Commissioner Smith says, I have a lot of things coming up on this ballot that are extremely important to my district, right? And I'm afraid that this is going to get caught up in the mud with everything else. And it could be a controversial part of the election, and people may just roll in and vote no to everything, or maybe they'll vote yes to everything. But am I willing to take that risk? Am I willing to take that risk for my constituents and for the things that we're trying to do in the South Valley? I don't know. Does that make me a bad leader? Does it make me a good leader? I think that, you know, I could get a petition started, and it could be something that's not, that really isn't really going to help my district, but maybe really serve the Southeast Heights, or the Republican Party, for that matter, and they can go get that many signatures. Is it still a good idea for, to say, "Oh, well, they'll fix it later." Trust them. Just pass it, and they'll fix it as they go. Is that a good leader? I think you all may think that is a good leader, but I don't believe that's a good leader. So let's go to some of the questions. All right?
Yes, we're here to answer your questions.
Okay, so Santa Fe did a public financing ordinance by going through the city council processes. Did you try to do that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, we, the original legislation in 2005, which I sponsored, and Senator Martin Heinrich was on the council at the time, supported it, as did Commissioner O'Malley, as did the majority of the council. That's how we got the original law. Our preferred mode would have been to do the same thing. And part of the reason, to your point about delaying and not talking to the commission, part of the reason why we didn't engage with the county commission until so late, which is a fair point, is we really were trying to work with the city council. To do that, we needed six votes. For a lot of reasons, which I won't really prejudge, we couldn't get six city council members to agree that it was, despite the fact that, Mr. Chairman, in 2005, 69% of Albuquerque voters supported the public financing system. Democracy Dollars, all it is, is trying to repair some of the damage that was done by the Supreme Court when they removed the matching provision. Just as a quick reminder, Mr. Chairman, all three mayoral candidates, including the incumbent Mayor Marty Chavez, Mayor R.J. Berry, and Richard Romero, all ran as publicly financed candidates in 2009. The system was working. It wasn't perfect, but it was working, and the majority of us on city council put it in place. Councilor Gardunio used it as city council. So it was actually working. Supreme Court struck the law, the matching provision down, which really would have made privately financed candidates be able to compete with publicly financed candidates to compete with privately financed candidates. So fast forward, we've had less and less use, certainly as a mayoral proposition, it's very difficult to use, because you don't get the same amount of money that a privately financed candidate would do. So Democracy Dollars is an attempt to try to fix that one piece of the legislation. Our preferred method, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, was to go through council. I can't tell you why six of them would not agree to it. They all had different issues. Some felt maybe that it would put their own reelection in jeopardy. Some folks thought that they didn't really like the idea. So what our charter allows us to do, as a resident of Albuquerque, our charter allows us to then go to a petition process. For those of us who are former legislators, you know, if we don't like that, we got to go to the legislature and say, "We got to change that. We can't allow," we can have a fight about whether or not we want to support petition processes, but there's two ways to get something done in the city of Albuquerque. You can try to get a supermajority of the city council. We couldn't do that. So we went the other way. And part of the reason why it was so fast at the end, Mr. Chairman, is because we were trying to get folks on board. Didn't happen. And then we had to collect, we had 60 days to collect the signatures. We didn't even know if those were going to be certified. So by the time we figured out they were certified, we had about two weeks to work with. We reached out for folks to sponsor. We frankly had the commitment, and, you know, I'd love for Commissioner Smith to maybe change his mind. We had a commitment that we had at least three members of the commission who were going to support putting on the ballot. And it was our mistake, perhaps.
So you gambled on three Commissioners?
No, we gambled, Mr. Chairman, on the fact that the commission would believe that if 28,000 of their constituents signed a petition, that they would put it on the ballot.
Okay, so let's talk real quick about the 28,000. How many were actually certified? Do you have that?
Yeah, I don't, we did not. The county clerk's office didn't work in that city.
Oh, okay, the city clerks did that. And how many were certified? Do you have that? Okay, while he looks for that.
19,000.
19,000, which is a great amount, which is a great, that's a great thing. I think it was a great, it was a great campaign, and it's not that I'm against public financing. I want it to be done right. I don't want there to be holes. I don't want to be, I don't want there to be illegal litigations, right? Damian Cruz ran in my district, and he got beat up by a special interest, which makes me funny, is that he's come and he's advocating for Democracy Dollars, but if Democracy Dollars were in place when he ran for office in my district, the special interest group that supported the candidate that beat him would have taken all those Democracy Dollars and even had more money to buy more commercials, and he was, he's not even aware that that could have happened to him in a primary election, just so he's a so he, he's aware of that, and so he knows that. Um, so, the section three of the ordinance by peti- so, there are two petition processes, right? There's, uh, in Albuquerque, section three for an ordinance by petition, section six for charter amendment, uh, by petition. Why, why are you just, uh, why are you doing an ordinance by t- by petition so that democracy dollars amounts can be changed in the future without having them go through a charter change?
Um, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, this is a, um, this is a, an amendment to the city of Albuquerque's charter, and I must give you a little background, uh, from the point of view of common cause with, with whom I am now working. Um, we have been engaged for about six years, uh, with a charter task force for the city of Albuquerque. I was, incidentally, on the county's charter task force. It was a streamlined process compared to the six years of work that we did trying to modernize the public financing, uh, public financing system, which everyone agrees needs to be modernized in light of these court decisions. And, uh, this is one way of, of doing it. Um, and as, um, Eric Griego said, uh, tried to work with the, uh, city councilors to, uh, pass an ordinance, which is the other way of amending the city charter, and they were, um, they were unwilling to do that. So, we organized a commu- a coalition of about six or seven community groups, uh, to avail ourselves of what I think is probably the most democratic, uh, tool in our, uh, in our local and, uh, and federal government, and that is direct democracy, allowing the people to petition their, uh, the people and put it on the ballot directly. So that's the background, we have tried it in the past, um, and, um, you know, that's why we are here tonight.
So, has the city opted in? Um, could somebody from the county clerk's office, uh, go up and, let's talk about opting in on the election, and has somebody, and has the city or the, is some, Jamie, could you come up here and answer that question for me, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, uh, Jamie Diaz, Deputy County Clerk, as today, as of today, the city has not opted in to the Local Election Act.
So how is that gonna affect all of this? So we moved this forward, how does that affect it?
Um, that I would have to defer to the county attorney, uh, but, uh, clearly, by changing the charter, they're aligning themselves with opting in, but there is no action, and I don't know, and the county attorney may need to speak on this, but I don't know if there has to be action, I believe there has to be action by the city council to opt in, other than just their alignment of their charter, um, election dates. But again, I'm not an attorney, so I would defer to the county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't mean to speak for the city attorney, I do visit with him frequently, uh, just to try to work together on items. Uh, we discussed whether or not the city would be opting in to the Local Election Act. It was my understanding that the city was considering that positively to opt into the Local Election Act. In fact, I, I thought perhaps there was a, uh, possibility that it may have happened before this meeting, being the meeting yesterday, was one possibility, but as far as I know, the city has not yet opted into the Local Election Act. That would be a city action.
And what happens if this moves forward and they decide not to do that?
I think, uh, if this moves forward, they would be bound by this process, which would be a petition type of process for a, a charter amendment, uh, much like our charter, it's, is basically the operating constitution of that governmental body. Uh, we reviewed that, uh, when we drafted the urban county charter, whether or not we'd have a petition process, uh, we decided not to, and I think that was the will of the commissioners. The city charter has a petition process, both for petitioning ordinances, uh, and petitioning charter amendments, uh, and I think a charter amendment would probably be, um, the strongest, uh, change.
So I think, so i- in my, in my mind, you know, even with these, with the signatures they have, um, it will go, and it will still have to go, they still will have to have an election on this particular item, right? They'll have to have a special election anyway. This is not keeping this from going to the voters, this is just a conversation on whether it goes into, on Burnaleal County, on Burnaleal County's election ballot, and not the city having to do this on their own. And then, and so I have concerns on, on, on both of that, if you'd like to...
Mr. Chairman, and I don't wanna speak for the city attorney either, but because this is a charter amendment, uh, the process is that an election has to be held within ninety days, from the date that, um, the council files the proposed amendment with the city clerk, and for the time of filing the petition with the city clerk, so they're on a ninety-day clock. With ballot initiatives, um, under Article Three, it can be at the next regular, um, or special election, or the next city election. So, we're on a ninety-day timeframe, and to not hold the election will violate the charter.
So the city would have to have an election, correct?
I'm gonna let the city attorney speak, but there's a blackout period where you can't have, unless it's a concurrent election, it won't be able to be held.
Chairman, 'cause out of the commissioners, that's not entirely accurate as far as the, the impact from the Local Election Act. Unfortunately, um, given the provisions of the Local Election Act that passed, yes, under the city charter, the provision, uh, regarding direct, uh, changes to the charter by, by petition mandates that the city would have ninety days to hold us an election on that issue, but the Local Election Act supersedes that, and so, and has eliminated the, the time, uh, and has provided that within seventy days in either direction of the, of the general election, that we cannot have an election, and the local government cannot have an, an election within that timeframe. So the earliest that the city would be able to hold a special election would be, uh, I believe it was January fifteenth or sixteenth, I'm not sure, I didn't have, I don't have the date with me today, but that's, that would be the earliest time. So...
Okay.
Hope that answers the question.
Somewhat.
Thank you.
Um, so, this is separate from a regular public financing, but in, uh, in the amendments, they're also raising the amount of public financing in the charter from one dollar per voter to one, uh, dollar and seventy-five cents per voter, even though that, uh, they don't discuss that as much of, as that is a part of democracy dollars, right? Can you explain that to me?
I'll ta- Mr. Chairman, I'll take a crack at it, and then, um, see if anybody else wants to add. So, um, the whole point of this, so in two, when, when all three mayoral candidates ran, the reason why Marty Chavez, R.J. Barry, and Richard Romero all ran as publicly financed candidates, Republicans and Democrats, and we elected the first Republican mayor under public financing, just for the record, this is a nonpartisan issue, um, is because they knew that if they ran, if they, if they ran privately, that the, the publicly financed candidates were gonna be, were gonna get matching funds. When the Supreme Court struck that down, when they struck that down, it was a huge incentive for everybody to buy into the system. Uh, so, what do we have now? We have a system where if you, uh, if you ra- if you run for, if one of you runs for mayor, uh, you go, you get one dollar a voter, and it's three hundred and eighty thousand, and if everybody else is privately financed, they can raise, as some people have, north of a million dollars, one point one, one point two million dollars, and you just have to make do with the three hundred and eighty thousand. Now, in principle, you may wanna do that, but you're gonna be at a huge disadvantage, or you're gonna provide room for independent PACs, as we've seen, to sort of play a bigger role, which none of us really want, right? So, um, the, the money part of this is really, really important, so part of what democracy dollars is trying to address is to put publicly financed, in this case, mayoral candidates, on a level playing field with privately financed mayoral candidates, right? So, one way to do that is to have twenty-five dollar vouchers, but in addition to that, the one-seventy-five was supposed to put a publicly financed mayoral candidate in a much more competitive position with a privately financed candidate. We wanted to do the same thing with city council, th- the majority of the city councils who we talked to did not want to do that at that time, I can't tell you why, again, they had different reasons, different levels of support for it, but that is also something that we should look at. If we want city council candidates to be competitive with privately funded, uh, candidates for city council, we should, we, we need to raise that as well, and that's something that frankly council can address by the votes you described, Mr. Chairman, if they get six votes to do that, they should do that in some election in the future. So, the money pe- piece is important, and the one-seventy-five is important, if we wanna have mayoral candidates who are publicly financed, who are, who are competitive with privately financed candidates. Uh, we did, we did some analysis in this last mayoral election, and we found that three hundred and fifty people in the city of Albuquerque, three hundred and fifty individuals were responsible for three-quarters, seventy-five percent, of the contributions for the privately financed candidates. That means that three hundred and fifty people in the city are, for privately funded candidates are picking, are really have a huge influence in who our next mayor is. So if we want publicly financed candidates for mayor and for council to be competitive, we have to give them more resources. So the reason why we supported the one-seventy-five increase is because we want that to be, uh, we want mayoral candidates to be more competitive, and we, we think the city council should do the same thing, we fully support that, so that they can be more competitive with privately financed candidates.
Okay.
Anybody wants to add to that?
So, um, I'd like to address the rog- the log rolling question from our, from our, our county attorney, um, that was raised, uh, during public, uh, public comment, uh, do, do you have an opinion on that?
The, uh, the prohibition against log rolling, uh, in the state statute, in the state constitution, applies to the legislature, uh, so if you look at it, it's, well, it's, it's in the legislative, it's kind of a nuanced answer, so, Mr. Chairman, the article four, section sixteen, uh, says, "No bill shall embrace more than one subject," uh, and that's kind of the log rolling prohibition, and it says, "Except General Appropriation Act," 'cause you know you're gonna be appropriating money all over the place, "and, uh, bills for the codification or revision of laws." So we do have what would be permissible log rolling in the legislature, such as when we amend the election code, so, or you amend the criminal code, so when you're doing kind of a comprehensive rewrite. Uh, so, so the prohibition in the New Mexico constitution is against the New Mexico state legislature, it doesn't specifically apply to the county commissions. However, uh, there is some log rolling case law that would say i- it becomes kind of a fairness question, uh, and the fairness question is, are the, if there's more than one provision together, are they so unrelated that those voting for them would be offered kind of no choice? In other words, is, is it a choice, boy, I'd really like to vote for this, but not that, and I'd really prefer to have it separately, uh, so whether or not...
But if I want this, I gotta vote for that.
Right, so that, it becomes that type of analysis, kind of a fairness analysis, so the answer is gonna be kind of a lawyer's answer, is it, it would be one of those things that the courts would have to go through, whether or not it was fair or not, uh, and whether or not it was impermissible, a type of log rolling. The, uh, on, on one hand, the lawyer answer, a two-handed answer, uh, this could be read to say, "We're looking at the public campaign financing laws in the city of Albuquerque, and we're gonna write them to comport as one fix throughout on public financing, so that the public financing with regard to how much the mayor would be amenable to if he ran on a public finance, whether or not you have a demec- democracy dollars concept, and to align the elections to, uh, comport with the Local Election Act." That could be a comprehensive kind of codification of that, if you look at how they would now, do the analysis on a legislative process.
So if you were, so, okay, let me ask you this question then. If somebody decided to sue, uh, a candidate based on them using this type of public financing, and found that this was, and they wanted to use this specifics, uh, specific thing in part of their lawsuit, is the county, um, are we liable because we're the ones that put it on our ballot? Are we the ones that're gonna have to go to court to defend whether, uh, what you just said to be the truth, or do we, or does the city take that over? Uh, because I, you know, there's a lot of questions, and, and, you know, I got a lot of emails, and so I picked four random emails, and called them back, and had discussions with, uh, people who signed the petition, and after we had some conversation, the, they thought there was some holes. Um, you know, we, we were worried about, um, you know, uh, misuse of these vouchers, can you track the vouchers? Is all that all set in place? Do you know exactly where, you know, the twenty-five dollar democracy dollar comes from? Does it come from out of the district? Does it come within the district? Are the numbers specific? Is this, is the city clerk prepared to do something this quick, right away, right out the gate? Uh, and if not, if those are part of a lawsuit, and if all that becomes part of a lawsuit and becomes litigation, is the county liable for putting that on our county ballot, or is that a city issue, and that, is, should that be on a city ballot?
Mr. Chairman, that's a very good question. Uh, my answer would be, uh, based upon the history, we've had a history on this before, two years ago, uh, this commission was requested to place two items on its ballot, and the commission declined to do so. The commission was sued, uh, as a result of that, and, uh, was told that it was a mandatory obligation to put those, um, items on the ballot. The district, and that, uh, the gentleman, I guess, showed part of that pleading, I, uh, represented the county on that and did the arguments, we, we won that case, it's up to the commission to decide, based upon your review, whether...
But you, you still had to go and go to the...
So, the, the, the underlying question that would be, the lawsuit would be whether or not it was an appropriate exercise of the discretion of this commission to put this, or not put this on the ballot. That would be the, the question. The secondary question would be, is it impermissible log rolling, or are there other problems with it? If you remember the Healthy Workforce, I think that was the name of it, uh, debate, the biggest debate on that was, is it has to be printed in eight pages or in summary? And, and what we were saying is, that's not our obligation to define, it should be a city definition of that, and I think the court actually decided that later on, uh, and actually opined that later on, but by that time, it was back in the complete, uh, bailiwick of the city, because this county declined to put it on the ballot. So then, that issue about whether or not it would be, uh, summary or not summary was worked out through the courts. So, to, to divide the question, I think, uh, Commissioner Smith is right, it's difficult because it didn't come to us as our own question, we're dividing someone else's question, so, so that's kind of hard to divide. And then the next practicality is, if the question was divided, and then you put the three questions on the ballot, instead of a six-point font, we would be now down to a four or a three-point font. So there's, if you have more questions on the ballot, it becomes a little more problematic.
All right, okay, um, so there's, you have no, no discussion? Yeah?
Let me make some comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so, uh, I think the, the, I think it means make something clear that, um, you know, I support putting it on the ballot, it's a, it's a, it's gonna happen soon, I mean, this is the closest election, it's the, you know, it's the one probably that has the most participation, and, uh, which is one of the reasons why I wanna move it forward, 'cause I think if it doesn't get on this ballot, it will go, there's opportunity, I guess, for a special election in, in, in January, and those are pretty, um, small, um, and, uh, I don't know what else could be on that particular ballot, but, um, and of course, they're costly, but it could, could be that you'd have to do that anyway to correct some things. Anyway, so, um, that's one of the reasons I'm, uh, putting, I really didn't feel, you know, that I, uh, I didn't feel comfortable really going through the merits of this particular petition, because it was something that was, uh, put forward by the, by the, um, public. So, um, and, uh, should it get on the ballot, it, even in the future, or maybe if it gets on November, but in the future, those who have advocated for it have to defend it, uh, and, uh, it may not, it could, you know, something happened, it could pa- pass, it could not pass, and that's, that's, uh, it's always difficult, I mean, um, and it's always a challenge to do things like that, but, uh, uh, my understanding is that, that those who advocated for it were prepared to do it, so. Uh, those really are my comments, uh, I didn't get into the, the, as I said, the merits of the question, um, those certainly will come up in terms of an election, uh, if it, if it makes it to the election, it'll certainly come up, and knowing, as I said, that there are a lot of questions about this, and they're very good questions, um, and that's something, again, as I said, the advocates have to defend when something like this comes up, so. I just also wanted to say that, um, uh, you know, I, I think my, this is the largest folks, uh, people who, uh, find sign for this petition, it looks like the largest came out of my district, and, um, it's a very engaged district, and I really appreciate people's participation there, um, but I do wanna say that, uh... But I do want to say that I know that people are very... Feel very passionate about this because they work so hard to do it. But it's important that, I think, to respect also our decision tonight, whether you agree with it or not. I just feel like, you know, we have this question, I think, of civility, and it's becoming a big issue in this country. And I think it's important to be civil when we have these discussions and to be respectful. So just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Commissioner Stevens? No questions? Okay. So... So on the voter participation, is there a higher voter participation on a city's special election? Or is... Because the research I did is you get more participation on that type of an election than you do with the county.
Yeah, I think you want to try to take that one?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we've done some research as well. And our research shows that definitely in a midterm general election, there is much higher participation by voters as compared to specifically a mail-in ballot election that we would... That the city is looking at for February and off-cycle or odd-year elections, for sure municipal ballot-only elections. And my organization, the Center for Civic Policy, we track voter trends very closely at the municipal and the statewide level. And those trends seem are pretty consistent.
Okay. Because that was... We did some research, and it was told to me by a couple of city councilors that that the research is what opposite of what you say. So I wanted to hear from you on what your thoughts were on that. I don't think that, you know, one way or the other, I think you're going to get good participation in this. If you've got good participation in the form of going out and getting signatures and people passionate about it, I think you'll have the same type of participation no matter which way an election will go out for this, if this is truly important to the people. I think either way, you're going to have a lot of... Like Commissioner O'Malley said, you're going to have a lot of questions to answer. You know, I don't know, you know... This is a tough one. For some people who think that it's black and white or left and right, I'm not a left and right, you know? I'm a... I'm right and wrong. And I'm trying... I try to make the most right decisions and try to make the least amount of wrong decisions that I possibly can based on the information and based on the data that I have in front of me. I think you did a tremendous job. I think that your fight for equitable elections is valid. And I support, as you move forward, you know, really fixing how public financing works. I'm grateful for your work. I'm not grateful for your work. I just have a lot of concerns. And at the end, you saw some of my concerns were really based on legality and the legal issues of what could happen to something that really, from, you know, the emails I got from other elected officials, is it's really none of my business. That this is a city problem, not a county problem, and that they have to face these issues. And why is the county having to face these issues? And we've discussed that because it's an easy way to get it on the ballot and it's a track. And it's better than going six years, you know, trying to change something six years. But my thought is January isn't six years. January is right there. The next mayoral election is going to happen four years from now. I think by that time, and I believe strongly, by that time, I have a lot of faith in you up there that you're going to be able to answer those questions and that you're going to be able to, you know, lock all that down. And so there is no legality that when people run for office, they don't have to face, you know, going through legal issues the whole time they're in office. I'm still in legal issues because of what happened during the voting, right? I'm still going through it. My case is at the Supreme Court. And I'm trying to stop that from happening to other people who decide that they just want to try to change what's wrong with where they live and what's around them. We may not agree on everything. But look, I don't agree with my children on what to eat for dinner. That doesn't mean I don't love them, and that doesn't mean that they're not part of my family. I take to offense that somebody tells me what a Democrat it is and what a Democrat is not. You are not one to say that, and me and you know that, that we're not to say that about anybody. That's not why I'm making decisions here based on a party. And Mr. Gregor, you know that about me. Just have a lot of questions, a lot of heartburn, and it just doesn't pan out for me in black and white. And that's it. It's just that simple.
Can I just... I just wanted to address one...
I'll give you one last comment, sir.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, first of all, I appreciate all of you agreeing to hear this, Mr. Chairman. You agreeing to let the public be heard. And I know people are passionate, and I share Commissioner O'Malley's views that we need to... All of us, it's on us to try to be much more civil, even when we disagree. So... But I think this boils down to a pretty basic thing at the end of the day, Mr. Chairman. It's, yes, there will be problems with this system like there was with the first system. Litigation, just to be clear, litigation is something that many people, including Mr. Rogers, who left, that's what they do. And whether you're... No matter how this goes tonight, the county, as your county attorney tell you, there's exposure for the county in terms of litigation because people want to feel on all sides like they were treated fairly. And if it's a valid legal issue, a court will hear it. If it's not, it'll certainly be struck down. So I think the fear of litigation that folks try to sort of use as, you know, is not... It's not something you escape. It's what... It's part of the process, right? But I will say that it is a simple issue, Mr. Chairman. I think if 20,000 people in all of your... In your district, these are voters, believe that they can sign and they, after listening to the proposal and reading it, that they should have the ability to vote on something, we can complicate it as much as we want. But that's the fundamental issue here. Whether you like it or not, whether you agree with it or not, whether you're Republican or Democrat or not, whether you're going to use it or not, whether it might help you as a candidate or it might hurt you as a candidate, the fundamental issue is do we believe that if 20,000 valid registered voters in the county of Burnalee say respectfully, "Please put this on the ballot. Let us decide," that we ought to do it? It's... We can complicate it a lot. But really, that's the fundamental request here tonight is... And for you, you know, as I say this as a constituent, is like, I'm... I signed it. I was out at Albuquerque High all day. I was at the North Valley Neighborhood Association getting them. And people thought... They didn't say, "You're out of your mind." They said, "This is a good idea. Like, let's try to at least see if it works." And I had to make the case to them. So as someone like me who cares about democracy, I think you ought to just go with what the 20,000 people thought. Put it on the ballot. And if it goes down in flames, if it's as messed up as you all are describing it, it's not going to pass. It's going to go down in flames. If it's really as problematic as Mr. Rogers and Commissioner Smith say and so on, voters aren't stupid. They're going to vote it down. So it's on us to get it... To clear that up. So I just want to, as a constituent and as someone who worked hard on this, I really respectfully request... And also, I want to take responsibility for not reaching out to you sooner. The things were moving quickly. We reached out to sponsors. We realized that... We realized that we should have engaged you sooner. That's on us, and that's on me in particular because it was my job to reach out to you as my commissioner. So I'll take the responsibility for that.
Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have just one question. Can you clarify this issue? If the county commission declines to put it on the November ballot, would the city have to hold a special election within a certain period of time?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, the city, we're still evaluating and reviewing what our obligations are. And so I don't have a firm answer. But at some point, we will have to have this on... This will matter, will have to be heard. So we're anticipating it would be... The clock would start, but given the passage of the Local Election Act, that isn't clearly defined.
Okay. So I guess I'm not asking about what that period is, but would there have to be a special election? Or is there... Is it possible that it could go until the city election in 2019?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, that's one of the issues we're still looking into. So it depends without giving the lawful answer. But we're concerned about that, and we're looking into that as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's it? Okay. All right. So thank you so much. We will go down and we will take a nomination for... I mean, a motion for approval for Item 4A.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve 4A, the motion to approve authorizing democracy dollars to be presented to qualified electors in the 2018 general election.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chair, I have a second. And before I move on, I just want to thank you for moving to revisit this question and for allowing the public also to hear the... So that we're... They can talk to us. And I thought that was a very good process. And so I second.
All right. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? No. Motion fails. Announcer of the next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, September 11, 2018, administrative meeting at the 5:00 PM. This is E. Gregor Chambers. This meeting is adjourned.